Welcome to Teleforum, a podcast of the Federalist Society's practice groups. I'm Dean Reuter, Vice President, General Counsel, and Director of Practice Groups at the Federalist Society. For exclusive access to live recordings of practice group Teleforum calls, become a Federalist Society member today at fedsoc.org.
Welcome to the Federalist Society's Teleforum conference call. This afternoon, April 29th, we discuss the litigation update on Coalition for Thomas Jefferson High versus Fairfax County School Board. My name is Evelyn Hildebrandt, and I'm an Associate Director of Practice Groups at the Federalist Society. As always, please note that all expressions of opinion are those of the expert on today's call. Today, we are fortunate to have with us Erin Wilcox, who's an attorney at Pacific Legal Foundation. After our speaker gives her opening remarks, we will turn to you, the audience, for questions. We'll be thinking of those as we go along and have them in mind for when we get to that portion of the call. With that, thank you for being with us today. Erin, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. As Evelyn said, my name is Erin Wilcox, and I'm an attorney with Pacific Legal Foundation. For those who may not be familiar with PLF, we are the nation's oldest public interest law firm dedicated to defending individual liberty. And the particular corner of individual liberty that I focus on is the equal protection clause, and particularly as it relates to K through 12 public education. And today, I am really excited to talk to y'all about a lawsuit that PLF recently filed in the U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Virginia in Alexandria. And that lawsuit is called Coalition for TJ versus Bray Brand. Right now, lawsuit is at the preliminary injunction stage. We filed the PI motion last week and actually just a few minutes ago, received the defendant's motion to dismiss, and both had hearings set for May 21st. So this case is really starting to heat up and get exciting. Some background, TJ is the nickname for the Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, which, by the way, is currently the top-ranked public high school in the nation. U.S. News &amp; World Report actually just published this year's rankings, and TJ was number one again. So everyone's very excited. TJ is located in Fairfax County, Virginia, and its goal and mission is to provide a top-notch education for students who are gifted in STEM, so science, technology, engineering, and math. Up until this year, admission to TJ revolved around a nationally normed standardized test. Applicants did also have to meet some eligibility requirements that involved residency, GPA, and math prerequisites, but the TJ test was the largest factor. And something else that is important to know about TJ is that its student body is about 80% non-white. Around 70% of those non-white kids are Asian-American. Those kids are kind of lumped together as Asian-American in all the demographic data, but there is a ton of diversity within that figure. TJ's Asian-American students' families come from over 30 countries, from Korea to India to the Philippines. And the other 10% of those non-white students are Black, Hispanic, or two or more races. But despite the fact that TJ is pretty diverse, the Fairfax County School Board was not satisfied with the demographics of TJ. And to put it bluntly, they appear to have felt that there were too many Asian-American students and not enough Black and Hispanic students at TJ. So this past fall, they decided to revamp the admissions policy so that fewer Asian-American students and only Asian-American students are likely to get in. Our clients are a group of concerned parents and community members called the Coalition for TJ, and they believe that this kind of racial balancing violates the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment. PLF filed a lawsuit on their behalf this past March, and this is an Arlington Heights claim where we argue that even though the new TJ admissions policy is spatially race-neutral, and it is, and we don't dispute that, but it was enacted with a racially discriminatory purpose and must be shut down. And, you know, the Fairfax County School Board is not stupid, making an active plan that says, you know, from now on, each TJ freshman class will be 20% Black and 20% Hispanic and 20% Asian-American and so on and so forth. That would be an outright racial quota, and that would be immediately suspect. So instead, they resorted to more covert means. And that's something that's becoming very popular in the world of specialized public schools. Under these kind of plans, a school district uses a proxy, often geography, instead of race, but that will have the same outcome as a straight-up racial quota. And again, you know, this isn't anything new or revolutionary. Several years ago, the mayor and the chancellor of the New York City schools decided that there were too many Asian-American students getting into New York City's specialized high schools like Bronx Science or Stuyvesant and changed some policies to effectively close off a number of seats to Asian-American students. And again, that was not an outright ban on Asian-American students. It wasn't an outright quota, but the effect was the same. And this is happening in other places, like in Montgomery County, Maryland, with their magnet middle schools or with the exam schools in Boston. So at TJ, the school board eliminated the race-blind admissions test the month before it was supposed to take place, by the way. So you can imagine how many angry eighth graders there were out there who had been studying for months for that. And then the board waited for two months to announce what would take its place. And what they came up with was a system that limits eligibility to TJ to the top 1.5% of each middle school's eighth-grade class, and then applies a holistic rubric to determine who gets a seat. And on the surface, this 1.5% quota might sound okay, but in effect, there are a handful of middle schools where Asian-American students are clustered and which have a history of sending a high number of students to TJ. So in one fell swoop, a school that usually sends 80 to 90 kids to TJ per year is now limited to something like 12, which would be 1.5% of its eighth-grade class. The parents that make up the Coalition for TJ do include some very good data analysts, and they project that this change could result in a drop in Asian-American student enrollment from 73% in the current freshman class, which was admitted under the old system, to 31% in the next freshman class, which will be admitted under the new system. Now, that's a big drop, to be sure. But as I said earlier, this type of manipulation to racially balance schools is happening in a lot of places, and disparate impact alone is not enough to trigger heightened scrutiny. So what makes TJ a particularly good choice for strategic delegation? Two things. First, in addition to the evidence of a significant disproportionate impact on Asian-American students, we also have particularly strong evidence of a discriminatory purpose. And two, we have some very involved and very motivated clients. So to the discriminatory intent point, school officials in this case spent the entire last summer and fall talking about how much they wanted to racially balance TJ. Our complaint cites numerous examples of the TJ principal, the superintendent, various school board members saying stuff like the demographics of TJ should match the demographics of Fairfax County as a whole, or slinging out what our clients received to be anti-Asian stereotypes of tiger moms and anti-Asian American racism towards the Black community. Board members derided TJ students as being test-prepped in second grade and made many, many references to TJ's toxic culture. And it didn't even stop with just school district-level officials. The Virginia Secretary of Education compared Asian-American students' test prep for TJ to illegal performance-enhancing drugs, and a state delegate told a working group about the unethical ways that Asian-Americans push their kids into TJ when those parents are not even going to stay in America, but instead are using TJ to get into Ivy League schools and then go back to their home country. That's some pretty heavy and inflammatory stuff. So, you know, getting at discriminatory purpose is difficult, but we're hoping that with so much clear evidence from such a range of people, coupled with a substantial effect of the new admissions policy on Asian-American students, that will be enough to convince the court that defendant's policy must have a strict scrutiny. And I told you that the second thing that makes the Coalition for TJ versus Bray Brand such a great case is the involvement of passionate and motivated clients, and that is absolutely the truth. You know, as lawyers, we are keeping tabs on situations, you know, like TJ, and we're reading school board transcripts, but there is just no substitute for parents who are on the ground, they're living this, and their engagement and commitment is just invaluable. And PLF, we're so lucky to work with clients like this in many of our cases, and I would argue that it's not possible to litigate these cases, or at least not to do it well, without clients like this at your side. So finally, also, I did want to say that I am the one who's lucky enough to be here presenting this case and talking to all of you. At PLF, we litigate as a team, and this case is certainly a team effort. So just wanted to say a quick thank you to my co-counsel, Allison Zelman, as well as Chris Keizer and Glenn Voper, who made me on this call or maybe stuck my deposition, I'm not sure, but hopefully they're able to join us. So that's it for the Coalition for TJ versus Bray Brand in a nutshell. Thank you so much for your interest in this case, and I welcome your questions.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. At this point, I'll hand the floor over to our first caller.
Hi, Erin. This is Wen Fall, so from Pacific Legal. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about, you said, you mentioned earlier that this is something that's prevalent, and not just in Virginia, but also in other parts of the country as well. And I, as I understand it, PLF has been litigating this issue in courts all across the country. So I was wondering if you could touch upon, you know, the other, some of the other cases and why there's this sort of trend where the government makes discriminatory statements against Asian-Americans and then what they do after they make those discriminatory statements?
Absolutely. Hi, Wen, and thank you for your question. And yes, I did mention there are several other cases across the country, and one of them, very timely, is in New York City. I think I touched a little bit on that, and that's a case where Asian-American students have just been killing it with admissions to these top high schools like Stuyvesant and like Bronx Science. And by the way, these are largely working-class Asian-American students. These are not, you know, rich kids whose parents are paying for them to get into these elite schools. These are kids whose families are sacrificing a lot and who believe very strongly that education is the key for their children to accelerate and move up in this world. And, you know, there are statements that are just kind of unbelievable until you read them, and I believe it was the Mayor de Blasio in New York City who said that, you know, no one owns these schools, meaning that Asian-American students don't, you know, have a right to go to these high schools in New York City. And that's just unbelievable. Anybody who worked hard has a right to go, to, you know, compete on an equal footing to go to these schools. And, you know, the same thing in Montgomery County, Maryland. There, it's happening at the middle school level. Montgomery County has got several really exceptional middle school magnets, and in that case, the school board actually hired them a consulting firm and paid them many hundreds of thousands of dollars to figure out the best way to racially balance their schools because they feel that too many Asian-American kids are getting in. And the same kind of focus in their talk on, on race and racial motivations. And I think at one point, someone in the school board said, well, why can't we just automatically consider race? Why can't we just judge it that way? And so, you know, I, it's hard to know why people feel emboldened to make these statements. I think certainly the rise of critical race theory and the rise of just this belief that the government should be in charge of everything, the government should decide who gets to do what and who gets the benefits and who gets the burdens, and this less of a belief that individuals have mirrored and that individuals should get what they get based on their, their talents and abilities. But yes, this is, those are only just a handful of examples. You know, we've seen what happened in San Francisco with Lowell High School, where they just got rid of their advanced program altogether. And I think the world is, or the nation is watching TJ, they're watching New York to see what happens. So these are, these are important cases. And certainly will happen in fact.
Great, thank you. Let's now move to our next caller.
Hello, Erin. This is Stephen Edeblu. I'm a student, an undergraduate student at Hillsdale College. I appreciate your talk. I just wanted to ask if you believe that there's anything substantial about this case in particular, and what larger impact you think that this case might be able to make towards anti-discrimination cases or any cases in the future?
Sure. That's a great question, and thanks for listening in. You know, I do think what's outstanding about this case is, as I said kind of earlier, the facts of this case. I think you normally don't find examples of school officials who are quite so open about how badly they want to use race to decide who should get to go to a school and who shouldn't. And so I think that's certainly an excellent opportunity to kind of expose what is going on beneath the surface in a lot of other schools. But as far as its impact, you know, we, you know, we see this as a case that could go all the way to the Supreme Court, of course, as we see with the New York case and in our Montgomery County case as well. But we really, it's time for the court to kind of decide this question once and for all. Is diversity a compelling interest in K through 12 education? And of course, we argue it's not. And of course, you know, our opponents would say that it is, and they lean on Justice Kennedy's concurrants and parents involved. And so I really, this case is a great vehicle to finally get that question up to the court and ask them to turn once and for all, because that's what will put an end to these kinds of, of, you know, covert racial balancing quotas that we're seeing. So I think this case really does have an opportunity to impact this area of the law for a long time to come.
Thank you, Erin.
Great, thank you. Will now move to our next caller.
All right. Thank you very much for, for having us. Personally, I don't think that such a thing like race even exists. And I wanted to add, I wanted to preface that before I ask the next question to make sure that you understand where I'm coming from. This is Edward from San Diego, and the question I have is, and maybe it's already been, maybe I came in late, but how do we identify a Asian from a, let's say, a Pacific Islander or somebody whose, whose skin color is a little bit more like Asian than white or something else like this? What are the defining characteristics? How do you, how do I know, how will we know if, if the people who are, if the racial balancing would really be successful or not? How will we know if they've succeeded if they don't know what, if they don't have a definition for what an Asian looks like? Is there any litmus test for who's Asian and who isn't?
Edward, that is such a great point, and I'm really glad you brought it up because that's something that's really important to understand in all of this, is race in this context is just something the government came up with. Exactly. And the point, they're, you know, the whole thing where at TJ, you know, they, and this is not specific to TJ, but you know, Asian-American is a demographic classification, and that could mean anything. That could be, not anything, but, you know, someone who is Japanese has a very, may have a very different experience than someone who is Indian. And someone who's Indian has a different experience than someone who's Pakistani. And yet, they're all lumped in together in this one racial category that the government has come up with, and that really just underscores the stupidity of that. It's meaningless. What matters are individuals and their accomplishments and their needs and their talents, and that's how they should be evaluated, from, you know, everything from schools to jobs to everything else, rather than being lumped in these meaningless categories that, you know, have no bearing on who they are or what they need. So that's an excellent point you raise, and it just further shows the futility of, of this classification and why, why the focus should be on the individual and not on these, you know, categories the government came up with who knows how long ago.
Great, thank you, Erin. I'll turn the floor over now to our next caller.
Yes. Good afternoon. Thanks very much. I am a little embarrassed to say that I don't remember the details about the procedural posture of the case that I'm thinking of, or even if it was a case rather than just sort of a, an academic discussion, but I recall, I thought it was a Supreme Court case in which the, one of the Ivy League schools' diversity program, I want to say it was Harvard, was challenged, and the roots of it were traced back to anti-Jewish bias at the beginning of the 20th century. And if that was a case, if it, if it, you know, hasn't been decided or if it was just negative discussion, I'm wondering to what, you know, if I give you enough detail to be able to identify it, if, if any of that is, has potential bearing on the resolution of this particular case?
Yes, great question. And I do know what you're talking about. It's actually the Students for Fair Admission versus Harvard case that is, the cert petition has been filed by Students for Fair Admission and is pending right now. So that is kind of the, that's the first Supreme Court case in this area of the law right now. So that's a very relevant topic. And it's, it's slightly different than this case simply because it involves higher education, and this case involves K through 12, and the court has distinguished between legal and adult. The Harvard case is going to, I think, have a significant impact on, on this TJ case and cases like it, simply because, you know, in the Harvard case, one of the arguments they're making is that race is not a factor in the admissions decision. It's not one of many. It is the single most determinative factor. If a student is Asian-American and applying to Harvard, that is, their race is the indicator of whether they will get in or not. And similarly, that's what's happening at TJ and happening in New York and in Montgomery County. If a student is Asian-American, their race is the most determinant, significant determinant factor of their ability to be admitted to that school. So, you know, while there is a slight distinction in terms of it being K through 12 versus higher education, this is definitely, the Harvard case will be a seminal case and certainly one to watch as it's applied to these K through 12 cases as well.
Great. And if I could just follow up very briefly. So in terms of the potential grounds of distinction, obviously, the Harvard case, you know, you don't have, you don't have public action, or at least as compelling public action. I would think in that instance, therefore, that your case would be more compelling because you're talking about public schools. Is that a fair, is that a fair assessment? Are there other grounds of distinction that you might see, or?
Well, so our, our case does involve a public school, whereas Harvard, you talked about public funding, but I think, yeah, the key distinction really is just the fact that it's, it's K through 12 versus higher education in the court and parents involved, you know, distinguished gritters saying that, you know, higher education has its own, its own special thing, its own special arena, and it has its own consideration. But I think the similarities probably outweigh the differences in terms of, of its relevance in this area, for sure.
Great. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. We'll now turn our, turn the floor over to our next caller.
Hi. Thank you very much for your work on this case. So I, my question is this, I probably beat you to the punch because I went on Pacer and I pulled up the motion to dismiss filed by Fairfax County, and so I'm flipping through this, and it's everything I know about the case, really, but they seem to be defending by saying, this has nothing to do with race, it's completely race-blind what our admissions policy is, we're, we're admitting people based on regional pathways to channel applicants for admission based on the location of their middle school. So I'm wondering if you would comment on that piece of their defense where they seem to be saying, oh, it has nothing to do with race, it just has to do with where you live and what middle school you went to. So that's my question.
Sure. And you do have one up on me because all I've had time to do with that is very briefly skim it. So, but that's kind of the argument that we expected. It's the argument we've seen in other cases, like in the Montgomery County case, where, you know, of course, the, the defense is that we're not, we're not discriminating on the basis of race, this is completely race-blind, we're just spreading out, you know, admissions based on geography. And what we'll really need to show the court is that, yes, you can say it's geography, but let's look at what these regional pathways, what this geographic preference does. And in Fairfax County, you have Asian-American students who tend to live in the same neighborhood, and you, they also tend to go to the same handful of middle schools, which are advanced academic program middle schools. So those are the middle schools that offer the kind of advanced math and advanced English and social studies classes that you need to get into TJ. And so of course, those kids cluster in those middle schools. And so all you have to do is take one of those middle schools that in a normal year would send like 90 kids to TJ, and not just apply to TJ, have 90 kids accepted to TJ, and limit them to 1.5% of their eighth-grade class. And that's like, for some places, that's eight to 12 kids. And so that way, you know, your effect is you're cutting down on Asian-American students without having to have a, a overt racial policy. So again, I have not been able to, had time to closely read that motion to dismiss yet. It was filed, I think, about an hour ago, maybe less, but I imagine that is what they're saying, and I imagine that's how we'll, we'll need to counter that.
Thanks. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll now move to our next caller.
I'm John Vecchione, and I live just outside Falls Church. I have, my question here is how much discovery you expect you'll get, because it, it strikes me that what's going on here is that if they had just started with the current admission policy they now have, and you were, you know, and they'd had it for years upon years upon years, you'd have a harder row to hoe. But this retreat from standards and particularly hard academic standards and tests and all that has a motivation behind it. And I would think that knowing the Fairfax County Board, the way I do, having followed them, I don't know that they'd be completely surreptitious in their statements about why. So my, my question is, if, this may not be an as-applied case, it's going to be, it's going to turn on the facts, and do you expect that there's going to be smoking guns about this all over the place? Or is there not, and you've got to make an argument at a higher level of abstraction?
Um, you know, that's a really hard question to answer, honestly, at this point. You know, we always, I think, hope for smoking guns. A lawyer doesn't love to, you know, be digging through and find that, that smoking gun. But it's, it's just really hard to say. You know, we feel good about this case because of what we already have that we didn't have to dig for, you know, these videos of these school board meetings and statements that, you know, TJ principals sent home in a letter to, to parents, not only saying that, what did she say, that TJ needed to be more representative of its community, and then she like did the math for the parents and said like, how many of each race should be at TJ to?
That, that's what I'm talking, that's exactly what I'm, that's what I'm looking for, just wondering how much of that add on the, on the record. All right.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't, we didn't even have to look for that. So, you know, it was fun.
And that's before you've gotten any email.
Exactly. That was just out of the public.
I haven't been able to go on a way, I just got the email about this conference call. Where is it filed and who, what judge is assigned?
Great. So this is in the Eastern District of Virginia in the Alexandria Division, and we have Judge Claude Hilton. And I'd also recommend to anyone who's interested, Pacific Legal Foundation, we have a part of our website devoted to this case, that will also have the pleadings and, and other information about the case. So pacificlegal.org is also a great resource for this case.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll now turn to our next caller.
Oh, this is Pepper Crutcher down in Mississippi, and I have two short questions. One, how is the argument that the school board's making here different than the arguments that school boards in Mississippi made 50 years ago trying to preserve neighborhood schools? And secondly, and with, with great unsuccessful, and secondly, under governing current law, could they close TJ if they lost this suit?
Okay. Both are very good questions. Thank you. Well, that actually is a very good question about how is this different than what they argued 50 years ago as in far as neighborhood schools? You know, I don't have a great answer for you on that. I appreciate that you've given me something to think about here, but it really is interesting how these arguments really don't change, do they? They just kind of evolve and shift to new circumstances, but, you know, we've all just kind of been arguing about the same thing for 70 years now. But if they close TJ, you know, that, that is a scary, that's a scary possibility. They certainly, we've seen just a few months ago in San Francisco with Lowell High School, and they, the school board there wasn't able to achieve the racial balance they wanted or enact the policies they wanted to get where they wanted to go, so they just ended the magnet program and made it a straight lottery. So I think that they could. I think it would be very stupid for Fairfax County to kind of close down TJ, which is their crown jewel, really, and has done a lot towards, I think, making Northern Virginia an attractive place for a lot of tech companies and keep families to move, knowing they have that option for their children. So I think it would be stupid, but I don't know what would stop them from doing it if they really wanted to. they really wanted to.
Well, you know, one, one comment. About 60 years ago, the state of Virginia passed a bill to close public schools that obeyed integration orders, and that was struck down. You might want to look at that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll now turn the floor over to our next caller.
Hey, this is Jim Gillmor. I'm the former governor of Virginia, and the former attorney general of Virginia. I thought I would alert the listeners to a case that's pending right now in the United States District Court in the District of Massachusetts, Boston Division. Boston Parent Coalition for Academic Excellence versus School Committee of the City of Boston, and the Boston branch, the NAACP, at all. I'm not handling the case, but a friend of mine communicated with me about the case. It's very similar. This is a case where they decided that a particular public school in Boston, which is a very high-class school, a high-performance school in Boston, just had too many Asians. So they jumped through a lot of hoops, and they decided to admit people according to zip codes. It's very creative. And they, they looked to see what the racial demographics were, and the various different zip codes, and decided to admit people by zip codes. What that's going to do is reduce the seats that Asians historically have had in that Boston school, because of that, because of that approach. The case right now is being argued as to whether or not this is subject to strict scrutiny. It obviously is. But the court seems to be skeptical. They seem to want to, you know, bend in favor of the public school board. So the, the issue of whether it's strict scrutiny or not should be, is presently in the breast of the court. The only other thing that I'll say is that the observation I made casually over the phone to some of the litigators was that the judge ought to really think carefully about this. If he does not apply strict scrutiny, well then what happens in the rest of the United States? And of course, everybody in the North thinks that everybody in the South is wearing a sheet all the time, so as my friend from Mississippi just implied. So if, if in fact, they really think that Southerners would like to resegregate the schools, well, you know, if this court doesn't apply strict scrutiny to this kind of behavior, they're opening the door to exactly that kind of behavior. Now, I don't think Southerners act like that anymore, really, and, but the point is that the court would be opening the door. And I personally think the judge would be a laughingstock if, if he, if he did that. So I just thought I'd make that people aware of this.
Yes, thank you. That is a very good point, and that's a very interesting case that we're following. Unfortunately, yesterday evening, the First Circuit Court of Appeals rejected their, their appeal, the parent's appeal. So it's, it's going to be interesting to see where that one goes.
Great, thank you. We'll turn the floor over now to our next caller.
Hi, my question is, you've indicated that, that this is a very fact-based situation. At this stage, the case, that makes sense. And that's true of each of the other cases that you mentioned. As this case progresses, do you see any broader principles that, that maybe would have some application to other cases? Or is every one case is going to have to be tried separately on its own facts?
No, I do hope that, that broader principles will be established. And, you know, the K-12 context is not the only place where we're seeing racial preferences. Another, another big area that I think is not being litigated as well as it could be, and hopefully will be more so in the coming days, is in the contracting industry, racial preferences, like disadvantaged and minority business enterprise programs. You're seeing those are fairly prevalent around the country. And I hope that principles that could be established, in my cases like this, would also be able to be applied in other contexts where the government is still handing out benefits and burdens based on, on immutable characteristics like race.
Have you, have you thought about where you'd like to go with that? Like what, what sort of a principle you'd, you'd like to?
I am so sorry, I had trouble hearing the end of that question. Did you get it over time?
Sure, sure. My question, my follow-up is, have you thought ahead to what kind of more general principle you'd like to have the court adopt in this kind of case?
Um, really, that's a great question. I'm having trouble articulating it. I think I'm so focused in on a, on the details of this case. But, you know, just the general principle that, first of all, if we could have the court establish that diversity is not a compelling interest in K-12 education, that's, I think, the big one that's in front of us right now. And then hopefully finding other ways to apply more broadly those sentiments and principles of individualism in other contexts where this is an issue, I think, would be the goal.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll now turn the floor over to our next caller, and this is the final caller in our queue at the moment.
Yes, thanks very much. Number one, I thought I heard recently that for some schools in Virginia, I thought it was Northern Virginia, and I don't, don't know if that's included here, had decided to terminate all of their advanced placement programs, like from the sophomore level below or something like that. I'm not sure if that's related to this case, or, you know, exactly what the impact of that would be. It's sort of a different variation of, you know, we'll just close the school solution that, or, or prospect that was raised earlier. And I did want to highlight something that the, when former Virginia Attorney General came on, and highlighted some of, some stereotypes that people have about, you know, regionalism within the United States. I would further highlight that people have a poor understanding historically of, of the colonial era, since, you know, slavery was originally illegal in Georgia, and the primary, one of the primary slave-trading ports was Providence, Rhode Island during the, during the colonial era. So, anyway, with respect to the question of, of, of shutting down advanced placement, I guess it was advanced math programs in Northern Virginia, I don't know if that's potentially relevant to the, the status of the case.
Um, yes, I do actually know what you're talking about. A colleague pointed that out to me recently. And I believe it, the state of Virginia is planning to do away with any kind of advanced math progression classes. I think it, I think you're right, I think it's through the 10th grade, so you'll just kind of take like a seventh-grade math, and eighth-grade math, but there's no ability to differentiate between taking Algebra 1, or taking Algebra 2, or moving up if you're more advanced in those classes. Which, again, just plays to this misconception that, you know, it's not about the individual and what they're capable of. And that will do a serious disservice, and especially, you know, to kids that want to go to TJ. One of the, the main requirements to be eligible to a school like TJ is that you've completed or are enrolled in Algebra 1 by the eighth grade. And if Virginia is just able to do away with that, that no kids are able to advance through math more quickly than others, you know, then you're, you're taking away that ability, ability to differentiate that who might need more of a challenge, or who might be more gifted in math. So again, it's this whole focus on, on equity over equality, and focusing on the group over the talents and skills of the individual. And it's, I have asked around a bit, and have been told that people don't think that that, that plan is likely to have any legs. But we can certainly hope not, because I can imagine a, a great exodus of families with gifted math students from Virginia, if that were to take effect, for sure.
Wonderful, thank you. We have no more callers in the queue at the moment, so I will now hand the floor over to Erin for any closing remarks or further comments that she would like to make at this time.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the callers, and what amazing questions that really run the gamut of, of this case, and of ideas to think about. So thank you so much for your interest, and for your engagement. And again, please do follow our case, and there is always more information available at Pacific Legal's website, which is PacificLegal.org. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. And on behalf of the Federalist Society, I want to thank our expert, Erin Woolcox, for the benefit of her valuable time and expertise today. And I want to thank our audience for calling in and participating with your excellent questions. We welcome listener feedback by email at info@fed-soc.org. As always, keep an eye on our website and your emails for announcements about upcoming telephone calls and virtual events. Thank you all for joining us today. We are adjourned.
Thank you for listening to this episode of Teleform, a podcast of the Federalist Society's practice groups. For more information about the Federalist Society, the practice groups, and to become a Federalist Society member, please visit our website at FedSOC.org.